Five, excuse me. We will call the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. I am Patrick Marshall, the chair. We have...
Ruth Gross, number trustee.
Jennifer Jones, library director.
Nancy Luthne, trustee.
All right, is anyone taping the meeting? We know Lake Cam is here.
Thank you, Matthew.
And with that, we will go to the secretary's report. Have the minutes of the April 23rd meeting.
I move that we waive the reading and accept as presented.
I accept it.
First and the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions, they pass. Financial report and gifts.
Okay, so we are in a spending freeze. We are not spending any budget money outside of utilities, contracts, necessary items. Anything that is sort of unnecessary spending has to get approval from Andrew and Sue Forth, town administrator, and Michael Ellis, town accountant. So right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern. I am still purchasing books using our state aid and any other sort of necessary, like we almost had a copy paper the other day. So that came out of gifts, out of copy paper.
Copy paper?
Yeah, we had a, we had a big print job.
Copy paper.
Copy paper.
You've got to do that before then.
I know. So kind of not spending a whole lot other than, you know, me, electricity, water, et cetera.
Water.
Rubbish, other contracted services. So we're probably not going to move much from what's listed here in terms of the budget lines. Obviously personnel, whatever utilities we need to spend on, postage, supplies, et cetera, we'll probably not move at all. Also with the SABSS money, I'm questioning, we got a report of the interest or the losses from the trust and it seems like it might be more than was in the account. So I'm gonna try to see how that played out. It might have been like a clerical thing.
That type of?
Yeah, so we, I'm checking into that so that, because I know we have that proposal kind of hanging out. I haven't gone anywhere with that recent proposal for the FONX materials. So I didn't really update SABSS on here because I'm not sure where we stand with it right now.
So do we have autonomy with state aid and, or does that have to go through town hall as well?
Um, I haven't had anybody questioning what I've sent over yet.
So it's not, it was not appropriated but it's, it's...
It's budget lines. Yeah, it's, appropriated money is frozen.
So the freezing spend is unappropriated, many.
Yeah. It was the budget lines, except for, you know, necessary utilities, et cetera.
Sure.
But I've kind of not, I did a small order for May. I didn't do a huge book order in May. Probably will hold off June until July just to see.
Is this just until the end of the fiscal year?
End of the fiscal year, correct.
June 30.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we did have one donation. He wanted to remain anonymous and he wanted to purchase a book that someone he knows had written. So it's available on Amazon. He said he would pay for the cost of the book and shipping. So he donated $20. And that's it for gifts.
And will meet the certification requirements, the spending.
Yes, we should. Because I've definitely, we're, if we look at how much we need for materials, we're definitely overdone pretty well. I didn't want to be even close to that, so I've pretty well overshot that, so.
All right. Directors' report.
So we got a nice letter that I did include in your packet from Dyken. I believe it's towards the end. They said thank you for the spinning racks, the two spinner racks that we sent to them and they were inviting us to their grand opening in the fall. So that's, see them in their notes.
Well, Mark probably looks at the, the Dyken director.
Yes, yeah, he came and picked up the racks himself, so. And then changes are coming to our statewide databases due to the loss of federal funding. So we're losing a lot of the GALE topical databases such as science, biography, health. We're also losing transparent language.
Losing science, biography, health?
The, the GALE in context, yeah, pretty much the whole swath that was cut. And so I started looking around. I got a quote for a database that's kind of similar to Peterson's career and test prep from EBSCO. And I'm going to talk to the network to see if there's any way to sort of cost share for some of these things or to think about, you know, banding together and getting some decent pricing. So there'll be changes coming July 1st to what's available on the statewide network. And then for youth services, story hours have wrapped up for the spring. Summer sessions begin Monday, June 16th. So she was averaging about 51 people per session, so about 30 children at each.
Wow.
So pretty big groups. And then playing with purpose is back on Wednesdays for the month of June. Music time will start in July and run through the month. She had some good steam afternoons with doing all kinds of projects with robotics and chem, science experiments and things like that. So there was another library offering a homeschool program at the same time, but she's going to try again in the fall and run it through November. And Mass Capoeira didn't have a huge crowd during April vacation, but everyone loved the show. They had a really good time. So Teresa would like to bring the group back during summer, either next year or the year after. Spending can be outside and we can take advantage of the stage that we have contributed to. And then teen peep she during vacation week had a good attendance with 14 teens. That's pretty good for us. And overall, April vacation though seems to be a difficult week to get crowds. And next year Teresa said she might stick to just in-house programming. Novelties under adult services had a good group to discuss Westwood Giraffes by Linda Rutledge. May's title was sandwiched. They just discussed it last night. Seems like people either loved or hated that book.
Yeah, she was very much in the process of reading it. It's a very interesting book on the change of life experience of women.
Yes, sometimes crazy. So people had very strong opinions on it, I guess. And then next month, they'll be discussing The Hidden Life of Cecily Larson by Ellen Baker. So we had Julie Stepanek Murray. She did a ukulele class for us at the end of April. We had 14 people, 25 people did sign up and we lost a few. Some didn't show, but most of them actually brought their own ukulele. So she had brought along 25 just in case. So everyone really enjoyed it and then they came out and asked me to start a ukulele club. So we'll have to see what we can do about the interest in ukuleles here.
We have so many amongst the interested group that could help lead.
Yeah, that's the thing, Julie's from Western Mass and she's...
Yeah, it's a type for her.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll see if we can maybe get her back in fall or spring though and see if we can get a ukulele group going. Probably not Thursday nights though, that's pretty packed already with cribbage and egg. Upcoming programs, we've got What is Bigfoot with Ronnie LeBlanc next week on Tuesday. Genealogy Club is featuring Nancy Ratner again. She's going to talk about the Mayflower silver books, which we got a nice donation from a man in Florida, gave us a few of the silver books. So when they're ready, I'll sort of introduce them. Then Novelties is meeting June 24th. And we start summer reading program with flying high dogs outside on Thursday, June 26th. And July is really packed, so we'll have more on that later. So for buildings and grounds, we did have the pumps, the waterfalls look great. Pumps were cleaned, pumps installed and the waterfall cleaned out for the season. You can actually see it. So Christina, our staff member comes to me and says, I didn't realize we had two waterfalls. I said, yep, we have two.
That'll add a lot of gross.
And so it's helped that people can really see it now.
Well, with the DPWs work removing all of the overgrown shrubs and the briars and the bittersweet and everything, it makes it much more...
And moving the stones.
And making the stones, yeah, relocating.
It's wonderful.
It looks great over there.
Did, did the waterfall people fix that?
No, I have to remind them of that. Another, another day.
Yeah, because that's, might be dangerous.
Yeah, so the grounds work by the DPW is complete, it looks very nice. The pipe outside the boiler room was still dripping. I'll check in with Paul. I think actually he might be on vacation this week, so I might have to get him next week. And then Advanced Air completed the repairs on the two broken BAV boxes. So I think that's set for next, knock on wood.
Till the next time.
Is this...
And then under other interviews for library clerk are scheduled for Monday, June 9th. We have five candidates.
Is this our retirees?
Yes, this is Carol's position that we're filling. So hopefully we'll find someone among those five. That I think it's interesting that out of the five, three of them are library school students. So that's, that's pretty interesting.
Ooh, good.
That's pretty good. Yeah, they're, well, they're in process. So they're going, yeah.
Cutting edge.
And then the annual special town meetings are on June 9th. We have two capital projects on the morgue, the roof replacement and the HVAC controls replacement. Those did go forward, so those will be on that night. And then we will start collecting food for finds in June. So the marketing materials are out. Teresa gave us a bin. We have the bin ready to collect the food. We'll make a sign for it. Never already had people asking about it, you know, if they can just donate food, so. It's pretty good. And then we will be closing early on June 11th at 4:00 p.m. for a full staff meeting. This is where we're learning all about how to do the beating for the summer. And then we'll be closed on Thursday, June 19th and observance June 10th. Summer reading programs for all ages begin Wednesday, June 18th. We are doing an adult summer reading program this year. We, we have a prize to give away. It will be an Amazon tablet, fire tablet. So we'll be working on getting that stuff out, but all ages can participate in the summer reading program this year. And then we have a new museum pass. I wrote and got the USS Constitution museum pass. It's no cost to us.
Where is that?
I think it's in Charlestown.
Charlestown, Charleston, okay.
And it's no cost to us, allows parties of up to nine people free entry to the museum. And I just wanted to address an incident that had happened. So we had an incident, as you know, between the student volunteers and a patron, just complaints about the loudness. So no further issues have been happening. The patron had given a list of dates that the students would be here, so kind of, so they're aware. And I just wanted to see, was it actually happening? You know, what was going on? Were they being very loud, so?
So the complaint was that the students were too loud?
Actually, the teacher was too loud yelling across the room to the students.
And then the adults, so the students were loud and then he yelled, uh...
He approached the adults to, to say, can you please be quiet? They were not, you know, didn't go very well, back and forth exchange. Then it led to him complaining to staff and by that time I think he had gotten worked up, so. And I did talk to the chief, Chief Perkins, about it and so he's aware. It seems like it's been, since the list has gone out and the person knows when they'll be here.
And they, and they can choose whether or not they...
Yes.
Are here during...
And they're only here for, I think, two more, three more months.
Because they end of school year.
They'll be here tomorrow and then they'll be here for two days in June and that's it.
Thank you for handling that.
Yeah, things happen.
So all in a day's work.
So the Friends Tea was a great success. There have been requests to host another one. I'm not sure if they're going to host another one. But they do meet in June and we'll take a break for the summer. So their next meeting is June 2nd at 6:00 p.m.
I wasn't at the meeting the next day. What was the review of the Friends? Did they, most of them feel positive about it?
I think most of them felt pretty good. I think, I think it was, was it Mary? Or Nancy, no, Nancy. Nancy kind of took over and had everything set because she had...
Running a chair if we do it again.
Nancy Ashworth, yeah.
And I think that if you have co, co people doing certain aspects of it, then it takes a little effort and you need a coordinator.
Yeah, and I think the one thing they said was they served the desserts too soon. They knew that, but other than that, everything went well.
It was very nice.
That's from a professional.
I know, I know, I had to pass that on. Randy Swan's exhibit was just taken down and the next exhibit featuring the work of the Guild of Natural Science Illustrators goes up at the end of the month. And this Guild show is the annual jury members exhibit in conjunction with their conference at Bridgewater State University in July. So they're having a special reception on Monday, July 14th in the evening. And I was told that their conference attendance is up to 150.
Great.
And they have a couple buses that are going to be bringing them over here.
So we'll spill over into the patio area.
Right.
And the gazebo area. We, we need to get a sign for the gazebo that says that it was named in Jamie's...
Well, I have the one to go by the door.
Right, but we, we were going to put one over the entrance to the gazebo.
Do you want to do that or do you...
Well, I just need to make sure I have the wording correct. I will be, and I will do it soon because I know that they must be starting to go crazy with all the end of the year sports stuff that they have to...
Would definitely be nice to have it by the anniversary celebration in case she's here.
So if you can send me the info. We went one of them and we'll do the dimension.
On the other plaque and...
Basically everything is on the other plaque?
I think so.
Oh, okay.
It's in my mailbox sitting there.
I'll copy it off, I'll copy it off. And then I will do a measurement for the, so it'll fit above that, our doorway.
I might have to run, make sure that person doesn't come in. Okay, keep a lookout.
Unless it's right up here.
No, it's not.
So do we...
Why 26 budget is next?
So from what I understand, it's going through town meeting. It was presented to the select board and finance committee. I haven't heard anything more about any more cuts. So I think we're, we're okay with the budget in terms of next year. I was told go ahead with the hiring, so we seem to be okay. And we'll learn more on June 9th.
Yes.
Policy, let's review volunteer policy.
Okay, so we start with the old volunteer policy. And then I sent it out to staff and then we ended up completely rewriting it with these two.
Well, it was from 2006, so it was a little...
So we took a lot of, you know, notes from other policies. And the only question I have is on page two, the second line. Volunteers will be asked to fill out a core reform, which they have to do. Waiver, I'm not sure. I have to find out from the town if they'll want a volunteer waiver to hold...
You don't have to do one?
That they're not going to, if they do something while they're here, injure themselves in some way, not following directions, of course, that we're not liable for any injury they may sustain if they're not following what they told them to do.
They personally will have...
Liability if they do something.
So if they climb low shelf and it falls over on them, they don't get to sue the town because they're not supposed to climb the shelf.
Well, did the other, does the town have the waiver policy or...
I don't know, I have to ask. And I don't know if we wanted to include that in here just in case that they do require waiver. That I'm going to work on because this is just presenting for discussion today. So I'll work on getting, I don't know that they have volunteers.
Not sure, you'd have to check, I would check with either HR or...
COA would have volunteers coming through.
There's a waiver for volunteers. Because I know things like you can't have volunteers doing medium work without permission from this common, you know, like highway. I remember, I remember that was something where volunteers couldn't do it. It had to either be an employee, the DPW, or a group designated by the DPW, which is why the Lions Club can do it. So I do know there's issues with volunteers doing certain things, but I don't think the library, MassDOT would have anything to do with that. So that's a MassDOT policy. I can't think of anything else, any other town administration I have. Schools would have volunteers. I would write by the town administrator and then HR.
Yeah, I would think it would be more of a town policy whether or not they want, because I haven't experienced that in any of my towns.
You don't have a policy?
No waiver, no.
So that's the only thing?
That's the only thing that I had to question. So pretty much we lined out the, it follows the same policy style. So it has a statement, we followed up with expectations and examples of tasks, then the guidelines. And then we had a special section for student volunteers because Teresa does get a lot of them. And then the next couple pages are the applications that we'll put together for volunteering. So we have the first one is a student, which does require a parent guardian signature. And then the adult application. So we kind of reworked the whole thing.
Before you sent it out, there was some question, weren't there?
Yeah, so I left that to, well, when we officially vote.
Sure.
Yeah.
So is this something we're going to run on the next one?
Yes. So if you want to read through it, come back with any changes, you want to see your questions about it. We're getting through the links pretty well.
Thank you to this staff for doing that.
I think we've only got four to five policies left.
We've been here...
Gone through, a year and a half?
A year and a half.
So we've gone through almost all of them. Wait, and the Great Ponds Gallery one is in the works.
Yes.
And I still, I had a couple things.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Audio proposals, updates, possible vote.
So the next page is Kevin's email, Kevin Shanley. So he gave me a price to go up in the lumens, which would affect the brightness level. So he said the one that I had asked about had been discontinued. And then there's the six, the L690U, which has 6,500 lumens. I think I asked him about one that had 6,000 or 6,200 lumens. So that one would be an additional 619 above the quote, which was sitting around $19,000 for the total audio proposal. I actually can't find the number, but I think I have it in here.
So the one that the other company suggested has been disconnect, discontinued.
Yes. So we have a choice of going with...
Second item is the third one.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that would probably be the best to go with. So it would just add an additional 619 to the audio proposal.
So this is coming out of our chase money rate?
Correct. So what are your thoughts on? When I looked up, Teresa and I looked up to see what is recommended for large rooms. And it's anything above 5,000. I think given the brightness of the room, I'm tending towards a brighter projector. So I would want to go with the 6,500 lumen, but I don't understand if it's a cost thing.
I have no idea or anything about this, so I feel bad, right?
Do you think 6,500 is adequate, sufficient? I mean, do you really want 7,000 but you're...
No, I don't, I don't think that would be...
Too...
Overboard.
Yeah, overboard considering it's not all that far from the, where it's mounted.
Which the other one is double, double the saving.
Yeah, and I should have looked at what we currently have, which I can't imagine is a high open projector.
Because it's over 20 years old.
Yeah.
So it probably...
I don't know if that's... As we were 20 years ago.
As bright as we were 20 years ago.
Well, the 6,500 too is a newer model too, isn't it? Is that what you're reading? So be kind of nice to start off with a...
690U is a new model.
Model that's more current.
Do you want a motion?
I would take a motion, sure, if we...
I move that we go with the Epsom paralite 690U or OU, 65,000, 6,500 lumens and $3,166, which is an addition of $619 over our last motion.
I second the motion.
All right, and I have a first and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions? Shall pass.
Okay, I'll tell Kevin so we can get started on that.
Do we know when the participation will be for the installation and everything, ordering the installation?
To go ahead and start like ordering things? And that was just the question of what do we want to do for the projector? So it would, I don't know how long it'll take for him to get it. Hopefully he'll be able to install it fairly quickly, but I can find out how long it will take.
Just to...
I figured to give him lead time to start ordering some of his stuff in case it takes a while. Hopefully he has been, but I'll check in with him about it. So the next is the proposal for the gazebo area.
Organic weed removal.
We got a proposal from Spillane's Nursery and Landscape Company to kill the weeds around the gazebo organically. And there was a recommendation to treat each month, which would cost about $150 to keep them down.
Each month.
Each month. I can ask him if it's like April to November, to see if it's...
Being able to October.
April to October, okay.
Because we have this...
July?
Thing coming up in July, which is very important. The gallery would like to have that area as an extension for the opening reception. We have the money to cover the initial cost.
The gallery has the money?
Yes, if that's approved by the select board, by the trustees.
So the initial 150?
No, the initial 13.
So the next page is the proposal to do the work on the weeds.
I'm not offering maintenance on it because I don't think we can stretch that far. But the one time 1360 we could cover.
The gallery is willing to give that money?
Now, is this, I'm reading, it was saying on the first page 150 and then I see on this page there's three gallons, 450. Is that, were they looking at three? The initial treatment, okay.
To knock the weeds down, to weed the beds, get everything situated. And then monthly maintenance at $150.
So it's 1360 initially.
1360 initially.
And then after that would be, if we did equal through October, it'd be one less month than so in November. So it'd be that times 150, number of months. I, I don't see if this, until we change that area, like we've talked about putting pavers in so that we wouldn't have the loose gravel around the gazebo. Until we actually get to that point, we, we don't have, really have an alternative, because it becomes really ugly over there.
It, it's, yeah, it's really unusable as a beautiful extension of our social area.
And also it just is, it's just, you can't walk in it either, you can't even walk there.
Right.
It did get mowed.
It is very nice, the, the new grass area is very nice there, I wasn't sure I was gonna like it, and I do very much.
Very nice, they must have taken the weed. Yeah.
But something needs to be done, somehow I thought I would come back from my trip and start weeding, and it's beyond me. I don't even weed my own house, so I don't know why I thought I was gonna come here and weed.
It's, plus there is weed block, I believe, underneath the gravel, which is okay, except that over the time of season, soil does deposit in amongst the stones. It's not really noticeable, but those weed seeds are very prolific and they just sprout anyway, so um we have a weed base there. So the, what they're gonna use needs to get down and get rid of the roots as well as what's up of the ground.
Yeah.
I move that we um spend the money, or accept the, I move that we accept the um gallery committee's donation of one thousand six, three hundred and sixty dollars to jumpstart this program. And also that we, us, the library assumes the hundred fifty dollar monthly fee from April to October.
Do we have that?
So July, start with our July budget, right?
So like, is. So I mean it, we have accounts, we can, um weather stated, of course, I can.
So there's money available without making it, well, it is an emergency, really, I mean, it's long overdue, and now that the DPW has helped us with so many areas.
Yeah, well, there's definitely. There's definitely the money and the gifts for the gallery.
The two major events coming up this summer, I, I would like to see it attached.
Oh, we want, we want it done, and this is the time to get it before the, everything takes more stronger hold.
Yeah.
And. I'm assuming Spillane's can do it before July fourteenth.
That I will have to find out, but hopefully I'll get on the phone with them to, email them today.
Well, if they're gonna start, um if they're thinking April, that the calendar year would be April, and we say October instead of November, um they would have assumed that in June, they would, at least with permission, they would begin.
Yeah.
So we have, depending on when they're going to do it, what their date is for application, it could have, they could do two treatments between now and.
Sure. Okay, so I second the motion.
July fourteenth, alright.
Further than a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Abstentions. Uh, the Dr. Boyce, uh Boyce team?
Yes, so you'll see, it's not in color, but there's a, if you wanna look at the color, you can pass this in. So Doris has worked with her donors, they have a total of eight hundred dollars. And they are proposing to purchase the two at the top, and the prices I think got a little, in her email got a little funny. So those two at the top are between fifty seven and sixty dollars, or sixty three, I think. So at the bottom you'll see prices.
Oh, okay.
Those two are for the top. This price of hanging out here at five forty nine is for this round pilot.
The oval thing?
I forget what the, yeah, I don't know what it's called.
Right. So it's all hand manipulable, right?
Yes, it's a manipulative sensory, they call it sensory wall. And so.
What's, and what are these dimensions?
Um, they fit, we, we measured, they fit, so you're a window.
You measured that, they're not over, oversized for you?
Or no, they're under. No, they'll fit underneath the bulletin board.
Bulletin board, okay.
That's on the side where the computers and holiday books are.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, the ex, the back wall.
One of them can go on one side of the outlet, and then the two can go on the other side of the outlet.
They have covers in the outlets, right?
Will have covers in the outlets, yeah, so it.
Cool.
She also then proposed, she wanted a plaque, so if you're getting.
Yep.
Um plaques, she has.
It doesn't have a reservation right there.
Yeah, she, she said she wanted to include that in the eight hundred, and I said usually it's not that expensive. Um, and so she has.
It's also interior.
Yeah. So she saw that the, I showed her some of the plaques that were around, so she knows. And then um anything that's leftover, she wanted to put towards books. Okay.
For the children's room?
For the children's room.
Great, do we need to prove this for the motion?
Aye.
Would assume.
Well, you would wanna accept it.
Yeah, I want that we accept the proposal from.
It's Doris.
Doris Kalucci.
Doris Kalucci.
Former office manager.
Regarding uh the memorial for Dr. Neil G. Fordstein.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye, all opposed, abstentions, alright.
It will be very bad.
Yeah.
That'll be cool. Uh, donation box.
Okay, so we had three students from Old Colony come in, and they're all seniors. And they wanted to put together a wooden community donation box as their civics project. They wanted to locate it under the entryway, so you'll see the picture of where the bench is. So I'm thinking they wanna put it where the bench is. They gave um sort of tentative donate, dimensions of forty two inches in length, twenty four width, forty two height. So it's a place where residents can donate clothing or home supplies to support members of the community in need.
Do we want that outside?
It's, I'm not sure who's gonna be collecting either, I'm not sure.
I'm just gonna ask.
They're gonna have somebody collect it, or if I have to find somebody to collect it, so.
Another question is if these are all seniors, have they already graduated when his old college graduated?
They just came, so I would assume it's next, early next month.
Yeah. Which is next week.
So the, yeah, I was gonna say, do they have time to make this?
Well, unless they're looking at it as sort of their class gift to the town or something.
Is it possible we could put it inside instead of outside?
To drop off, ease it drop off is what they're looking for.
But it's also ease of.
Why all these things are not undercover?
I don't mind if someone needs a coat, if they come and look for a coat, I mind if they go.
Well, the other thing is what happens if it's not emptied, you get cardboard boxes filled with stuff lame.
Yeah, so somebody's gotta come empty regularly.
Oh, oh, car seats and.
Yeah, it has, it would have to be really um.
I'm worried about security as well.
Clothing and home supplies.
While we do have a camera viewing this area.
Yeah.
I don't know whether it's, I'm not.
I wonder why they picked us as a site, no, I'm just curious.
Well, it's the end of May, they've run out of possibilities.
Well, I was just thinking, um.
I think it's a central location, and a place where a lot of people drop stuff off anyway.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of.
Could we, yes.
My concern would just be usually, unfortunately, you see these drop boxes, and as you point out, there's just a lot of other stuff.
Stuff, yeah, people are not always responsible on the computer.
I would, I would be concerned with being responsible for that, or having Jennifer and the staff responsible.
I was wondering, wouldn't, if you were going to drop off things, would not the landfill be a, a logical place? Because they do have all those other, they do have other um collection boxes for other things too. And people on the way to the landfill might bring used clothing to drop off.
Yeah.
What if instead we told them about our food for finds and asked them to make us a box for that? And we could use it for other dishes?
The other thing is, um, the Council on Aging now has a um food pantry, that, that was what they added on to the side of the building. I don't know if that, it's not, it's easy to, it's not when you're like driving by, like the library is on Precinct Street, but it is off Precinct Street, we'd be, they would be interested in something like that too. I mean, I think it's a great idea, it's just that.
It would need to be inside, no matter what it is, I think.
Oh, and also.
No, that's not gonna stop people throwing things in there.
Yeah.
I mean, if we did get a food for finds box that they could make, maybe much smaller than what they're proposing.
Yeah.
We could put it, you know, I had, I had plans to put the plastic bin in front of the clock. Maybe the bin, the one they make, could go somewhere closer by like the column or something.
Right.
I think maybe near the column, so when you walk in, you'd see it, right, with a hand sanitizer is or something like that.
Yeah. Right.
I can ask them if they'd be willing to switch their project to a food for finds bin with a lid and.
Yes.
Or maybe a shelf thing, so people could see what other people are dropping off.
They don't have, they don't have a job to do this, unless they're doing it outside of school.
I'm not sure, it just says it's a civics project.
So it's a bunch of teenagers who wait until the last minute, in other words, so, yeah, well. Give, tell them that right now our main focus on um donations is the food for finds and, and the food pantry. And could they help us with that? If they're very definitely set on clothing and housing things, maybe they should call.
Yeah, okay.
Or the COA, or Lori at the COA, or um Tracy would be the one for the landfill.
Yeah.
Or the town administrator's office or something like that.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Unless you have a little more lead time on it.
Alright, surplus equipment.
Well, that might be that.
Yeah.
Surplus, are they gonna have an option?
It's on my basement.
Um.
Is town having a surplus option?
Right.
I know DPW sent a list of surplus equipment recently, but this is mostly stuff that's old and broken.
Broken, okay.
Maybe needs to be disposed of, especially the, the old computers, 'cause a lot of them are not. They've changed the connection to monitors now, so it's no longer VGA, it's HDMI, and all of the monitors we have, they're older, have the old VGA connection, so. Some of them still work, some of them are completely broken.
Well, then I would assume the ones that are broken should be considered trash.
Yeah.
Uh, or recyclable or whatever, or that, yeah.
Yeah, data, data recycling is.
And then if the rest of them, um.
Staples used to take stuff, I don't know if they still do.
Yeah.
How old would our computer CD, do you have any idea?
So one of them's probably a two thousand eight, two thousand seven.
Ooh. Twenty two years.
Um.
Seven one one. Really ancient, yeah, they may be used as a museum for a long time.
Um.
Right.
Yeah, so a lot of them came from the recent staff change, there were a couple in the server room, there's a bunch of monitors in the server room.
Just a holding area?
A holding area.
Oh, I don't think that.
So some of the monitors are looking pretty um scrungy, because things have been growing on them.
Maybe they're seeing it.
And um, yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't we just do a dark brown, this is.
I think that you might wanna talk to the town administrator and ask what the policy is on surplus equipment, if there's no, that we just.
Well, that we just determine, yeah.
Well, I figured if we vote on this, I could take it to them and be like, I have all this stuff, what do you want me to do with it?
Yeah. The broken stuff is in one pile, and they have the stuffs, yeah, I, I believe that we.
Dispose of it.
Dispose of surplus, broken material, um computers, et cetera, that are no longer usable to the library.
Yeah, there's two pages too. There's a lot, yeah.
Second.
How many blocks are we talking, we just have, are there many of them?
Um, like boxes of the mice and keyboards, or?
What are we talking about?
Anything, all the computers, oh, it's been a while, for example.
There's also a broken chair back in the chair closet.
Oh, yeah, I didn't put that on here, but.
That could maybe just disappear.
Out of date.
So I have a first and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, all opposed, abstentions, alright.
The stuff usually charges for stuff like that, so possibly don't waive it for us, that's special.
Yeah, I'll. I'll talk to town hall to see if they have anything, 'cause I know Jamie used to use data recycling in New England.
I'll see.
And they used to take stuff, like if you had ten things, they would come for free and they would take it away. Not any longer, they charge four hundred dollars for a visit, and then if you have a printer, that's an extra five dollars, if you have a laptop, that's extra money.
Oh, goodness.
If you have a CPU, that's extra money, so they charge now.
Well, the town's IT may have something that they do, I know ours does, but it's like twice a year they'll come and.
Yeah.
I think it's. Put it on a barge and send it out into the ocean.
Okay, moving on.
Just a.
Swank movie streaming.
So the motion picture, swank motion pictures that we get our license from has a new streaming service, and it's not for the public to use. It's for libraries to use to show movies on site. And they have a list of which movies are available each month. And Teresa did a webinar on it, and I looked at sort of the turns, and we think it might be a good addition to um to our ability to show movies. So you have to have your license in place, so I actually, um, the cost would be four hundred for a year.
Is it calendar year, or is it?
So it goes through, so I did get a quote for, um.
Shall I?
I'd have to look up how much it was, I didn't print it off, I should have printed it off, but it has prorated amount. 'Cause our license goes through February, so it's prorated amount, so it's like in the three hundreds for the first go around with our license, and then once we renew our license, it'll be the four hundred plus the license cost.
So it's four hundred, what does the license cost?
I would have to look at how much we paid, 'cause the last time before I came, there was a three year license acquired, so I'll have to see what the cost is now. Um, sales, I think, got some consensual pricing for that, and I'd have to look at what the cost is.
You have to like.
We have the movie license, but we don't use it that much, or like sign them off, what were you doing?
Not to throw a wrench in this, but is this possibly something we could share with the COA, since they show movies?
Um, it.
No.
It's different.
Different site.
Yeah, it's a different site, and they have different pricing for different venues.
Yeah.
I betcha.
The COA would have to get their own license and streaming.
Okay.
So the, the reason we're looking at the streaming is because DVDs are harder to come by now, and some things they aren't even releasing to DVD now. So if we wanna show certain things, it's a little bit harder.
We, we just use it for a period of time, and we don't know what it is.
It's a DVD, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have to do it a lot to make more, and.
Yeah.
Good pop.
Book to movie club.
Movie club, I, we could start a movie club.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Like a book club, I guess.
You put a motion?
Uh, I'll take a motion if people want.
I move that we um adopt the swank annual public performance site license and streaming library order, or I guess for streaming libraries.
Second motion.
For a second, any further discussion?
Or a dodge. Or prorate.
None. All in favor?
Prorate.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, alright.
Aye.
And to find out if that's something that we need to revisit.
We revisit it, I might end up going with a one year license again.
Just, yeah.
Just to see, I know Teresa does show a lot of movies. And it'd be good to keep like using it, but you know, we kind of have fallen off with showing a lot of movies, the last one, I think we showed for adults was Wicked. So.
Did we have good attendance to it?
It's okay, I think the attendance was okay, adults we haven't been getting as many as children's get, of course, for the movies.
Yes, most everything's strained anyway.
Yeah, well, we get the, with ours, nobody wants to sit in the meeting room chairs to watch a movie.
Watch it at home, so I have to push.
You have yourself, put your feet up.
Well, then that would tell us that if we reevaluate the other year, do we want or not, it's viable.
Yeah, I could buy some use of our money.
There you go. Alright, reimbursement for Jay Jones. Let's hear an act. LibLearnX.
Yes, I included the reimbursement, request for reimbursement, and the LibLearnX, it was a cost of about three hundred and ninety-five dollars to attend.
For web learning?
This was the thing she went to.
In Phoenix.
Oh, the thing that you attended?
Phoenix, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great.
LibLearnX, the library learning experience.
I learned that we reverse, um, Jennifer Jones for three hundred and eighty-five dollars for the program she attended.
Now, second?
All right, for a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, right? All opposed?
Yeah.
Abstentions?
We need signatures, right?
Yeah.
Everybody or just that?
Okay, well, if everybody wants to sign in, it's fine.
If this, if we all sign in, then we definitely can go.
There you go. All right, uh, is there, before we get to next meeting day, is there anything else that we?
I will have, um, I'll give you the information for the next agenda, which would be the money that, what Torian's cost, plus the big planters for the gazebo area and those plants too.
All right, um, so our next meeting, if we cut through the form, would be June twenty-fifth at nine AM, does that work for everyone?
Are you tra-
Uh-huh.
No, my children are coming in that day, but not until that night.
So they could come in.
Yeah, they could come in.
They could be private, yes.
Oh, yes, that would be lovely.
They could see what their mother does in her fridge.
All right.
That would be.
So we will have June twenty-fifth at nine AM. Flip this in, sorry. Uh, that being said, uh, I would take a motion to adjourn at nine fifty-three AM.
So moved.
Second second, all in favor?
Aye.
We out.
All right, thank you, Matthew.